... stuff out there. From what he says. Yeah, it'll be fun.
Yeah, it will be. And a big cause.
Yeah. Yeah, I was kind of excited about that.
Along with the proof.
That's crazy.
So far, so good. You? Good evening. And it wasn't the people enjoying taste in our business?
Well, no.
No. What do we do this time?
Oh, um, yes, from Buffalo? Yeah, where did I see? Oh, I saw him at the WAM reception. How are you, ma'am?
Either in St. Patrick's week, or you think it's spring.
I'm trying to push it a little faster than it's going.
It's supposed to be like sixty the next couple of days, and then there's snow Friday night. You've got to love it.
Oh, yeah.
We're probably the cheapest ever band.
Yes.
Low bid.
I'll give you.
Not quite there yet.
Oh, yeah. If I have anything coming off to that board.
Been on it for like eleven years or something.
When did you start WAMCAT?
But I have, I've only been on the board for.
Oh, sure.
Is that a boy?
I do.
My whole goal is to get away from it.
Then, then you're going to have to convince.
Amen.
Thank you, I learned something. Big Pharma's where it's at. I do something like that. You'd think by now I'd know more about something.
Well, it's pretty complex, like you said.
The clock still says five o'clock. Don't get, don't get too excited about the clock.
Chill.
I was in there. It's really rough. Beam fell down, not, not your hair off. Oh, it just came real hard knocking on my back. No, I walked through the building.
All right. I am. All right, the, um, meeting of the governing body of the city of Cheyenne is called to order on this March 12th, 2018.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Laborne?
Here.
Mr. Luna?
Here.
Mayor Orr?
Here.
Dr. Rennie?
Present.
Mr. Royball?
Here.
Mr. Shaner?
Here.
Mr. Wyatt?
Present.
Mr. Case?
Here.
All members are present. Thank you.
Okay, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consent agenda, all agenda items listed with the designation of CA are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the governing body so requests, and support by two other members is received. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
Are there any items that any member wishes to have removed from the consent agenda? Any items? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, oh, I need a motion. Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Roybal, seconded by Mr. Luna. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Next item is number seven, vouchers.
Any discussion from the public on vouchers?
Madam, I, madam mayor, I have a conflict.
All right. Discussion, uh, by the public on vouchers. Give it a minute. Okay, hearing no discussion from the public. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Roybal. Discussion by council. Discussion by council? Okay, hearing no discussion on vouchers. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Ordinance second reading, amending section 1.16.050, off-site improvements requirements of chapter 1.16, annexation and infrastructure improvements of Title I general provisions of the Code of the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming.
Is there any comment from the public on this matter? Comment from the public? Hearing done, Mr. Roybal.
Madam mayor, one moment, please.
No problem. Is your chair higher than mine?
Pardon? Number eight, we did not discuss this last week. We only had that one item on our agenda, and that was second reading on number 10.
All right, let's clarify that.
Madam mayor, um. I'm, the, uh. This was on the agenda, but I think it was at Finance Committee, not Public Services Committee.
Oh, so wrong.
Oh, no, actually, actually, it was Public Services, but it's showing up as number eight on our, uh, agenda here.
Because you moved the agenda forward, that's why.
Okay, my fault. Okay.
All right, so Mr. Roybal.
Madam mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roybal, seconded by Mr. Johnson.
Madam mayor.
Discussion by council, yes.
I move to amend by, amend section 1.16.050B, section number four, by removing the language at the time of construction, the, of the off-site infrastructure improvements, and in its place adding, in the, in the amount deposited with the city, um, consistent with this chapter.
Right. Second. Seconded by Mr. Johnson. Let's go out to the public for discussion on the amendment? Discussion by the public? Right, hearing none, discussion by council.
Madam mayor.
Mr. Roybal.
The, uh, it would read, the amendment passed, section four would read, "If such refund is paid and the recipient is no longer the current record property owner, such person or persons shall not be relieved from the responsibility for the cost of the infrastructure improvements in the amount deposited within the city consistent with this chapter."
All right, any other discussion by, uh, council on the amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Roy, or Mr. Johnson?
I guess for Councilman Shaner, did he wish to add the additional language to the other part of the chapter? If the city attorneys had.
Um, madam mayor, through you, Councilman Johnson, to sections three and four, correct?
Yes.
We need that, and so does the sub only do four?
The sub only works with four.
Okay, so, yeah, so I guess, so we should pass his amendment and then move that, that language to be put in section three?
All right, any other discussion on this amendment? Discussion, the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The amendment passes. Any other discussion by council?
Madam mayor.
Mr. Shaner.
Move to amend section three, um, to reflect the same language, uh, about the amount deposited with the city.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roybal. Discussion by the public. Discussion by the public. Discussion by council? Discussion by council. Hearing none, all those in favor of this amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I wasn't aye, sorry about that. All right, any other discussion by council? Any further discussion by council? Right, we are back on the main motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Next item is number 12B, professional services agreement between the city of Cheyenne and Trihydro Corporation, Laramie, Wyoming, for Habichack landfill environmental monitoring services, solid waste fund.
Thank you, staff report on this, I guess.
Hello?
Hello. Craig Lavoy, Public Works Department. This contract is for our SLIM, which is the Senatorial Landfill Environmental Monitoring Plan. We went out for requests for proposals and received nine, we narrowed it down to three, and after the interviews, we considered Trihydro to be the best qualified, and I recommend the contract not to exceed $171,912.
All right, thank you. Is there any discussion by the public on this matter? Discussion by the public? Hearing none, Mr. Luna?
Madam mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve in an amount not to exceed $153,930, and I so move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Case. Discussion by council?
Madam mayor.
Um, Mr. Luna?
I move to amend by substitute dated 3/1/2018, in, in the amount not to, to exceed
Second.
Moved by Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Johnson. Discussion by the public on this amendment? Discussion by the public? Hearing none, discussion by council?
Madam mayor.
Ms. Roybal.
My colleague can, do you inform us what the difference in the money is? Or?
About $20,000, it looks like to me, but maybe.
Mr. Lavoy, if you could provide an explanation, it's too late. Thank you.
Really helped. Mike keeps learning.
Through you, mayor. The original price was put in, and it did multiply the amounts of times we have to do the sampling. There was sampling events that didn't occur, so it needed to be multiplied by three years on some of the areas. This DQ also included other sampling events that they wanted, between the time of the SLIM original proposal and the time that we went under contract with.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further discussion by council? Further discussion by council? Okay, hearing none, we are voting on the substitute amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes, we are back on the main motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Purchase agreement and settlement and release of all claims between the city of Cheyenne and Mary Rose Ramirez for acquisition of real property located at 2247 East 19th Street, Cheyenne, Wyoming, in conjunction with the Pershing Boulevard, Converse Avenue, 19th Street Roundabout Project, 2007 to 2010, 1% sales tax.
Thank you, is there discussion by the public on this matter? Good evening, if you would please state your name.
Mary Rose Ramirez, mayor, city council members, Mrs. Hackle. Thank you for the opportunity to share my experience, as this has been a long journey. My intention in pursuing this matter the past five years has never been with will ill with the city, but rather with an open heart in an attempt to create a win-win situation for all, as no good has ever come from the harm of another. As a former teacher, I learned the most effective way to solve problems is to be aware of potential problems and create a solution before they manifest. It was with this attitude that I constantly was on the phone or talking in person with former Mayor Kason, Simon's Construction Company, the many people who were overlooking the project, as they continually switched often, and others who were sent to communicate with me. When I approached Mayor Kason for the first time, I had some questions about what was going to happen, I'm going to kind of break this down into three parts, the before, the during, and the after construction. And my main concern was losing my front parking. And when I had asked the mayor, Kason, he said that I would still have my front parking. Because again, I'm looking on going, how's this whole thing gonna, gonna look? So, right after that, about two weeks later, he called me back and said, you're going to lose your front parking. Immediately at that point, I became very proactive because I knew that that was going to create issues. I parked in front of my house probably 99% of the time in the 14 years I lived there prior to the roundabout. Beside parking, very seldom did I ever park there, and when I did park there, you still had time to get in and get out because you had the stoplights. But I knew safety was going to become a concern, not just for me, but for my family, for my clients who would come to my, to my house, uh, to my friends, anyone that was going to come and have a connection with me, I knew they were going to be jeopardized as far as parking because it's very dangerous. I also had conversation with the gentleman that was in charge of Simon Construction at the time, who is no longer there, his name is John. We even went to lunch. And we finally met with the mayor, with, former mayor, excuse me, Kason, with John from Simon's Construction, with the city engineer, who's no longer the city engineer now, and we sat in a room and we were discussing all of the problems that may arise. And I finally stood up and I, and I looked at all of them and I said, listen, they all were in agreement that there were problems, and that safety was going to be an issue. But I did share with them, I said, the problem is not between me and the city, or me and the construction company, the problem is between the city and the construction company, and who wants to pay for it? And we had numerous conversations, um, after that. And while we were in construction, it became a constant communication with, I don't know seriously how many people that were sent to my doorstep, how many different people that I had conversations with. I was in a construction zone for two years. And unless you're in those shoes, you really don't understand what that entails. I would leave my house, or I would come back, and I'd look outside, and every time I would go out there, I said, why am I the only one walking around without a construction hat on? When everybody else there has a construction hat. There were drenches in my front yard, four or five feet deep. There was equipment left out, the majority of the time I was on the phone with the mayor, where, where am I going to park? There was no designated parking, and then I, there were times they, they made a space just south to park, I had to park across the street, but even getting in and out of my house, and I have a, a roommate that lives in the basement, the access to get into our house, there was construction work left everywhere. There was a time I came home and they were actually using my water. They had their hose hooked up to my house, and I simply asked, you know, what is the deal there? They're not paying my bill, but yet they're still using that. The other things that became a factor is I was talking to the sanitation department constantly. We should be best friends for as many times as we've communicated, and it's still an issue. Um, where are we going to put the trash? Where are we going to pick it up? It's not safe for me, it's not safe for, for the city workers. The winters are harsh, getting in and out of there. But during construction, I had to move in and out constantly, and I'd have to wait because they always had construction or something, one of their trucks or something or another was constantly going on to leave, and I remember this so clearly. I still get a little choked up, but I remember one time attempting to back out, and I had to wait about 10 minutes before they moved everything, and I was on my way to my mom's funeral. And so this was during a time that I was going back and forth from my house, from my mom's house, from taking care of her. And I just wanted to go home and get a good night's rest. I couldn't even do that, it was on Sundays, that construction started at six, and I would be talking to former Mayor Kason, and he said, no, there's a time record on that. They, they shouldn't be starting till eight. And these are just a lot of the little things that had happened, you know, along the way. Well, after construction, anyone who's been in that vicinity, it sometimes takes me four, five, six minutes to get out of my house. And I, there, I, I have to plan my schedule at times around the times when traffic isn't as aggressive, like around five o'clock, when it's always, where's cars coming and going. There's one thing that you never, ever get used to, and I'm still not used to, and yesterday's a prime example, it's hearing those cars crash. It has been constant. They may have said that in the beginning there were a few, no, it's still constant, and this is four years later, four and a half years later. Yesterday, I was in the living room, and I heard, it wasn't as loud as the usual crashes that I heard, and I was a bit confused when I walked outside. Cars were stopped, and there was a gentleman sitting out on the side by the curb with a backpack, and I'm thinking, was this a pedestrian that got hit? But then he had a helmet. There was a, a utility car in front, a navy blue one, and as I walked forward, I realized that his motorcycle was completely underneath the car. And it reminded me of when I was actually raking my yard on the corner underneath my tree, I had my back, because that's how most people rake, to the roundabout, and I hear a huge crash, and I turn and see a motorcycle going underneath. And I thought to myself, I am not even safe doing my yard work. But to see that yesterday, and I made sure he was okay, my, my driveway again was blocked because the cop cars were there, they pulled the other car up there, so if I had to go anywhere, I'd have to wait until they were completely finished with that, I made sure he was okay, which we've done several times. If you look outside my front kitchen window, you can see the roundabout, it's that close, and I want you to think about this, there's a roundabout north of town, there's a roundabout south of town. There are no houses near those roundabouts, and those are single-lane roundabouts. It just didn't make sense to me why my house, being in the vicinity that it is in, is that close to the roundabout. My great niece was looking out the kitchen, she moved in with me, my mom was, was taking care of her before she passed, and she moved in with me. The first night she was there, she's in the kitchen, looking out the window, it was about 10:30, quarter to 11:00 at night, and I hear, oh my god, oh my gosh! And I run in the kitchen, I'm like, what, what, and the next thing you go, you look out the window, and there was a, a truck that went, was heading east on Pershing that didn't even yield, and he ended up on the rocks. And we saw another truck come right behind, and he jumps into that car, I don't know if he was drinking or what the situation was, and they take off, and then the cops come. And of course, my great niece had to talk to them, I had to send information, um, but it's constant, and you start to become more concerned when it's your own family members, that's my great niece, and knowing that I'm going to be, she's going to be in a situation, whether her boyfriend, her husband at, today, but, would come to pick her up, to go to school, or I had to take her, you become more concerned when it's your children that become involved in that situation. And I often think, what if it were a family that lived there with kids, or an elderly couple? Winters are harsh, I shovel my snow to get out. I leave, I come back, the city plows, they're doing their job, the snow's right back up there. There are times I have to park across the street, reshovel, just to get back into my driveway. What if it were an elderly couple that lived there? And so those are just a lot of things that, that I've had to deal with, um, throughout it. One of the biggest things is being in a construction zone for two years, I run a home-based business, I couldn't have clients come to my home, and so I lost business. It would have been too much danger for them. Can't sell it, I tried, Lynn who buys houses wouldn't even buy my house, she wouldn't even look at it, but I understand why. And so I'm, I'm here paying my mortgage every month, in an investment that was my home, which now doesn't have a lot of value. I can't really rent it because there's nowhere to park, and I don't know consciously if I could even do that, knowing that I would be putting people into a home that's in danger. So if you can just for a moment put yourself in my shoes, I mean, if you lived in that house, and I'm going to put my glasses back on, if you lived in my house that once felt like a home, how would you feel waking up each morning, knowing you, your family, your kids were in danger every time you left the house? Listening to constant sirens, car crashes, speeding cars, honking horns, people yelling at each other? Turning into the driveway with cars constantly on my rear. If you, if I come on 19th and I take a right to get into my driveway, most cars, your signal light goes off, then I have to turn it right back on. People that are behind me are never looking to the, looking to the right, they're always looking to the left, because that's the direction that it's coming. Um, I've had people flip me off, as if it's my fault, sorry, had to slow down, this is where my house is. Leaving the driveway waiting for the right time to be somewhat safe as the cars will fly through the roundabout. And, and when I say fly, fly. They go through there as fast as they can. I saw, when it was first built, a truck go around like six times. It was late, late at night, and I hear these squeaking wheels, and I go out there, and he's just playing, and then takes off. I've seen it all, I've seen cars going backwards, I've seen cars flying on top, I've seen cars one direction end up the other direction. I've seen it, and I've heard it all, and it's something that you never, ever can get used to. And so, when you're making your decision today, I hope that you will take all of that into consideration. My life is not any more valuable, or any less valuable than any other person in this city, but I hope that today we can do the right thing and create a win-win situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any other public discussion on this matter? Any other public discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Luna?
Madam mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve in an amount not to exceed $185,000, and I so move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Case. Discussion by council?
Madam mayor.
Mr. Case.
I had the opportunity to, uh, visit this property today, and it was quite stunning experience. One of the things I found really interesting is the crosswalk lights, push a button there, and the lights light up to let cars coming know that a pedestrian is going to be crossing. And it also says, um, in a very faint voice, "Cross with caution, vehicles may not stop." I don't know what that tells you, but that tells me that, uh, we're very aware that this, um, is a dangerous intersection, not only for, uh, the drivers and pedestrians and so forth. But that's really not what we're, uh, here to talk about today. This situation is about righting a wrong that previous administrations absolutely refused to deal with. They've designed her into a literal box that she cannot get out of physically or financially. She has no alley or street access, she has a situation where, um, because of this, the, the garbage men are, the sanitation workers, I apologize, are put in danger once a week when they collect her trash, because they have to park in the alley, walk up to her house, um, amongst all this traffic, and take the trash back down to the alley, and then take the trash back up to her house. I don't think that's very efficient, um, use of, of their time. This is, this is really not about righting a wrong, but this is also about safety. It's, it's inevitable that somebody at some point is going to be entering or backing out of that driveway and get crunched. It's, it's going to happen, it's a matter of time. You know, when, whenever you get into a project like this, there are unintended consequences, and you can't really anticipate all of them, but it's very evident that the unintended consequence here needs to be righted. Some notes here, I guess, um, at some point in 2014, um, Mr. Bohaim was, um, basically directed the designer of, of the roundabout to quote, "minimize right-of-way acquisition to the extent possible." Well, we purchased two houses on the northwest side of this that, in fact, at the end of the day, did not need to be purchased according to the engineering department. You know, so the precedent on this project is there. Also, um, you know, want to point out that, uh, Ms. Ramirez did file a claim against the city in 2016, um, based on these conversations, but, uh, because a timeframe had passed, that claim was denied. Ms. Ramirez has been working for quite some time with the city to try to get this situation rectified. And I really encourage my colleagues to join me tonight and do the right thing. We have the money out of an appropriate budget. There are approximately, I don't know, I don't see Mr. Treasure, a few hundred thousand dollars left over, um, in earmarked money from Fifth Penny for Pershing.
Mayor, through you, Ron Downey, City Treasurer. Yes, Mr. Case, here's a, a.
Yes, Mr. Case, there's a little over $250,000, maybe a little bit more than that, that is still associated with that Pershing Boulevard project from a handful of years ago. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. So we certainly have the money available and an appropriate, and an appropriate funding mechanism. I believe this is the right thing to do, and I encourage my colleagues to join me to rectify what I see as a completely egregious wrong that the city knows it should have taken care of years ago. And Madam Mayor, I would also like to move to amend by substitute dated March 5, 2018, Section 2, where in the purchase price and settlement amount, the city shall compensate the seller an additional $13,950 as set for in subsection E below, for a total settlement amount of $198,950. Section B of 2, seller may retain and remove kitchen appliances, including the refrigerator, stove, washer, and dryer. Section E, little I, or section E, city also agrees to compensate seller for the following costs incurred resolving this, incurred in resolving this matter. Little i, attorney's fees not to exceed $5,650. Little i 2, personal loss and use of enjoyment of the property of $8,300. And on page 7, 15, little a, and other payments made, which references the dollar amounts that I just spoke to.
Thank you, Mr. Case. So for clarification, the total purchase price would then be? Thank you.
Do I have that right?
Plus the 5650 plus 8300.
I'm sorry?
Plus the 5650 plus 8300.
What, what, Mr. Downey, can you please provide a total, not the question?
198 plus 5650 plus 8300. What is that number? Anybody have a calculator? Sylvia?
Madam Chairman, or Madam Mayor, through you, the total amount, including the amounts that Mr. Case just talked about, the total amount is 198,950. That includes the two additional amounts that Mr. Case just talked about of $5,650 and $8,300. So those two numbers are included within the 198,950. That's in the substitute amendment. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Any further discussion?
Second.
Yeah, okay. So second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Luna. Discussion by the council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Shaner.
Through you to my colleague who moved this amendment, do we have any sort of computation for how we got to 8,300 in personal loss and enjoyment?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Case.
No, this is not a scientific number. There was no backup data. It was an ask by the homeowner, based on the situation that she's been through.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Shaner.
Through you to the city attorney, Attorney Hackle. If this was to, if there was an eminent domain action and it were to go to court, and the court determined what fair market value is, and the city had to pay fair market value, do we pay attorney's fees in that situation?
Ms. Hackle.
Madam Mayor, through you, Councilman Shaner. I obviously, I honestly don't know. I hadn't been asked that question before. Often attorney's fees are paid by the prevailing party. So, so I really would rather not hazard a guess.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Shaner.
Thank you. Nothing further.
Any other discussions by the council? We do need to go out to the public for this.
I, I do, but I.
Mr. Cook.
If you wanted, I mean, if you want to go to the public now?
Mr. Cook, we'll just, we'll, let's just keep this flowing. I missed that going out. So let's do, there were comments and then a substitute, and it kind of messed me up a bit, but.
Well, however you wish to handle it.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. To, well, I have, I have at least one question for Attorney Hackle, but I have a question for Ms. Ramirez, too, if she can respond.
Ms. Ramirez.
And you, you may not have had any reason to, because you probably didn't feel the need, but do you, do you have any, any idea what your home may have been worth through appraisal or other means before the construction?
I didn't get, I didn't get it appraised before the construction, no.
Okay. And then you, you made mention, and I just am curious about this, you made mention of approaching some realtors about trying, about trying to list it. Did you have any kind of market analysis?
Yeah, they had a market analysis. I recall, I'm not sure, I think it was like 175 at the time, but I'm not quite sure on that. I'd have to go back and look at the market analysis. My whole thing right now is I have a home where all the other homes, I worked part-time at the Real Estate Commission office because I had to pick up a part-time job because I lost so much in clients, because I, my business was basically shut down for two years. So you're asking about the $8,000, that's part of the justification there. And all the other houses are going up in value. And so that was the fair market price.
I'm going to pause for a minute. Ms. Ramirez, can you do me a favor and pull the microphone closer to you? By chance? Thank you very much.
How's that? Better.
And just one form, one more from Ms. Ramirez. About how long ago was the, the market analysis? Do you, do you recall?
I would recall maybe three, four years ago. I don't know for fact. I'd have to go back and look at those sheets.
That's, that's fine. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, I'll try to be brief with this. Through you to Attorney Hackle. So I'm wondering, I have a lot of curiosities, frankly, about the communication through the prior administration and Ms. Ramirez. But I guess the one question I, I really do have that I think is very, well, really, it's, it's sort of basically going to determine where I fall on this, on this issue. Do we have any record? Were there ever any formal offers to purchase this property ever made by the city of Cheyenne? And if they were, were they, were they rescinded? Were there, were there any offers ever made by the city of Cheyenne?
Madam Mayor, through you, Councilman Cook. I have a file in my office that's probably four inches thick, the vast majority of which concerns communications that did occur under the prior administration. And at the request of Councilman Case, I did, I both reviewed the file, and I did check. First, I talked with Tom Mason, because I figured the MPO had a lot to do with the roundabout, and he referred me to Nathan Bohheim. And it was a little earlier than indicated by Councilman Case, but Mr. Bohheim confirmed that when they were first trying to decide where the roundabout would be placed, that at that time, they would have considered purchasing Ms. Ramirez's house if she had wanted to sell it then. The city went ahead and purchased the two houses on the northwest corner of the roundabout in 2004, well before the design of the roundabout was finalized. Then Ms. Ramirez did approach the city to sell as well, but by then the design was fixed, and they felt, in light of the direction, to minimize right-of-way acquisition to the extent possible, that her house was no longer needed, and no purchase offer was ever made that I am aware of. Now, there have been discussions, there were under the previous administration, and there were under Mayor Orr's administration, to fix some landscaping and damage issues that occurred as a result of the construction itself. One tree was killed, other trees damaged, but the city did not, in terms of anything I was able to determine, ever offer to purchase the property.
Mr. Cook.
Through you, Mayor, in response. And I'm not putting words in your mouth, Madam Attorney. But so, yeah, it would seem to me that, you know, potentially by that time, they had figured out that they had purchased two homes that they didn't need, and were rather reluctant to purchase a third. So then they end up, by redesign, pretty much take away the, the value of that home, basically.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Cook, I don't know what the thought process was.
Right. That's, that's just conjecture on my part, certainly.
That could be. My understanding is, is that the design was complete enough. At the time, Ms. Ramirez had some discussions that they didn't feel they were going to need her property. If you look up at the screen where the yellow lines are, that's her property that is the northeastst, that's not a word.
It is.
But it got, it got you where you needed to be, didn't it?
Right.
And if you look to the, to the north of her property, it looks like a fairly big area where you see the green and the rocks. But if you've ever driven 19th heading east, that's not really all that wide.
No, I, I go by it probably 10 times a week. My, my family, the house I grew up in is three blocks away from that, so.
So it's, I cannot tell you, because I wasn't part of the city then, and I'm certainly no engineer. So I don't know when that particular design was set and the determination was made that that particular piece of property was not required.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Attorney Hackle. Mayor, that's all I have.
Further questions by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Luna.
You look at that picture, and common sense tells you, we should have bought that property way back. There's no access to it. You come around off 19th Street on Persh, or on, on Converse, and, and like Ms. Ramirez says, you gotta really watch your rearview mirror to, just to get in your driveway. There's no parking. That's, I guess I'll call it what it is, ridiculous. So I, I think we do need to right a very bad wrong and buy this lady's property from her. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion by council? Discussion by council? We are discussing the substitute amendment with the additional expenses. Final discussion by council?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Shaner.
Briefly, so I, I too think that we've got an appraisal. It says 185,000, fair market value makes sense to me. But I, I do have some concerns about going over that for unsubstantiated amounts that are just sort of ballpark punitive damages, and then attorney's fees was, I'm not sure we would pay even if we went to court. So I would encourage my colleagues to vote the substitute down and then consider possibly adding in some of this amendment regarding seller may retain and remove kitchen appliances to the main motion. But I'm concerned about the precedent we would set by approving this amendment by substitute.
All right. Any further discussion by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Case.
I apologize, and I'm looking through the sub. I just want to be clear. Ms. Hackle, where are the moving costs in this sub? I might have an old, I might have the incorrect copy.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Case, there are no moving expenses delineated as such. The numbers that are in here were off of the chart that Ms. Ramirez prepared and handed to you the day that we met with she and her attorney to talk about this matter. And it included attorney's fees and personal loss. And these were the amounts that she had offered to negotiate, not the original amounts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other question or discussions by council? And I'm going to throw it back out there for the public for regarding the substitute Ms. Ramirez.
Many of you are asking questions, great questions. You're, you're there on the council. I want, again, to look at the bigger picture. I had, I had to hire a lawyer, because every solution that the former administration offered was just a Band-Aid and never fixed the safety issue. And that costs money. I also lost two years in business. I still don't have the business that I had before, because no one wants to come around there. I have to look at what it's going to cost now to move. I don't even know how you're going to get a moving truck in there. I don't even know what that's going to look like. And so those were some of the things that we were looking on as far as that compensation. So, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. All right. Any other further discussion by council? Or by the public, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Councilman Shaner. I'm sorry. My name is Erica Smith. I'm an attorney for Ms. Ramirez. In terms of the eminent domain statute, if we were to go to a lawsuit and prevail, and Ms. Hackle and I would probably disagree about whether or not that would happen, the statute does require, does account for attorney's fees as part of the statute, and specifically says that in the eminent domain statute. And I would just say on the, in terms of the costs, Ms. Ramirez broke down, and unfortunately, I don't think maybe that we have it today, costs that she felt were appropriate, and then took all of that and cut it in half. And that includes my attorney's fees. We worked very hard to keep an attorney out of this situation, because I felt it was very appropriate for her to try and deal with the mayor and the administration at the time to try and resolve this without turning it into any kind of litigation. Unfortunately, that became an impossibility, and so we are where we are today. But I hope that answers at least a little bit of the questions in your mind about that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. This question's being answered. We are now voting on the substitute amendment. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
All right. May I see a hand of those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, those opposed? One. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, let me go, sorry, go back. Those in favor for the clerks, we've got Councilman Reibel, Luna, myself, Mr. Case, Mr. Laborn. Those opposed? Mr. Johnson, Mr. Shaner, President Menney, Mr. Cook, Mr. White.
Madam Mayor, through you, if I count correctly, up to 10, that's five and five. It's a tie vote. Therefore, it would fail.
All right. That motion fails. Further discussion from the council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cook. Oh, who is that? I'm sorry, a voice. Oh, Mr. Shaner.
Yeah, Madam Mayor. I move to amend as follows to Section 2, Subsection B. I move to add the language that was in the proposed substitute that allows the seller may retain and remove kitchen appliances, including the refrigerator, stove, washer, and dryer. Then I would add a Section C?
E.
Excuse me, E. Yes, thank you. E that says the city also agrees to compensate seller for the following costs incurred in resolving this matter as supported by proper documentation, colon, Romanet 1 would be any relocation costs, any reasonable relocation costs as required by law. And Romanet 2 would be any reasonable attorney's fees as required by law, or as may have been required by law.
For clarification, are both of those as may have been required by law?
Yes, let's do that.
Okay. So those will be, if you could state it again, please.
Oh, boy. So a new subsection E, city also agrees to compensate seller for the following costs incurred in resolving this matter, Romanet I, reasonable relocation costs as may be required by law, and Romanet 2, reasonable attorney's fees as may have been required by law.
And you're including the household?
Yes, the first part is, is in subsection B, so just the same language that was in the proposed substitute. proposed substitute.
Household items.
Yes, seller may retain and remove kitchen appliances, including the refrigerator, stove, washer, and dryer.
All right. Is everyone clear with that motion?
Point of information, the original motion is, the motion is stated originally required documentation for the moving costs, and I think is, when it was restated, that was omitted.
Oh, good point, yeah. So it says, "City also agrees to compensate seller for the following costs incurred in resolving this matter as supported by proper documentation."
All right. Do we have that?
I believe I do. Thank you, Ms. Hackle.
All right.
May I ask a question, Madam Mayor? Is there a not to exceed amount?
Hold on just a minute for that. Let's get a second on this motion and then we'll open it up for discussion. Do I have a second on this motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Case. Okay, discussion and questions. Ms. Hackle.
It's an open-ended amendment, and of course, as a lawyer, that sort of thing always makes me uncomfortable, though I certainly appreciate the intent behind the amendment. So I didn't know if there were any further parameters on it or not. I just thought I would ask for clarification.
Mr. Shaner.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, that's a good point. I would say if this amendment passes, we could certainly put a not to exceed amount in there.
Discussion by council.
But we don't usually amend amendments, so I was gonna.
True, we don't.
Other questions by council?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson.
For Sylvia. So the current way, and I'm not talking about the refrigerator parts, but the last part. So since it says as required by law, since this actually didn't go to court, is this is more of a contract, so is there, I guess, is there a course of action that's typically taken with these types of things? It says as required by law, more in a contract setting than in, say, a court case?
Madam Mayor, through you, Councilman Johnson, I would say no with respect to the attorney's fees. I think the closest we would come would be the eminent domain statute to which Ms. Smith referred in her comments. To my knowledge, there is nothing in the law that refers to relocation expenses. We could, I mean, I could certainly research it and see if there's something in other case law, but that wouldn't be in statute and that would be very specific to the facts of each individual case.
Madam Mayor.
President Rennie.
I think where this has come from, and I know you and I have had this discussion before, but I've been told by past city attorneys in regard to other instances that if the governmental, and I think it's federal law, if a governmental entity requires someone to move, then that entity is responsible for their relocation costs. And so maybe the law's changed, or maybe the advice I've been given in the past is incorrect, but I think that's where this came from.
Madam Mayor, President Rennie, you are correct in that respect. I guess I was thinking more, does the law specify an amount? And the answer would be no.
Then the answer to the question would be whatever complies with the current federal law.
Or, Dr. Rennie, we are not forcing her to move.
It's true. It's just the landlord.
Other discussion by council on the amendment?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Case.
Just to be clear, we need to amend this amendment, so.
Let's, it needs to then go back out to the public and then come back in. So if there are any further questions on this amendment, further questions on this amendment, further discussion by the public on this amendment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, Erica Smith, on behalf of Mary Rose Ramirez. Councilman Shaner, while I was sitting there, my brain went back into action. And actually, where we would come in a lawsuit would be through inverse condemnation. It's part of the eminent domain statute, but that's the specific cause of action that would happen, and that is where the attorney's fees come in. Whether or not it's actually in the eminent domain part, I'm unclear, but that is not the cause of action that we would bring forward. And just in terms of the relocation costs, I agree with Attorney Hackle that as may be required by law, essentially, there is nothing that would allow that, and so it would strip her of those costs.
All right. Any questions then further by council? All right, we are back on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
All right. Mr. Johnson and Mr. Laborn opposing. Further discussion by council?
Are we back on the main motion now?
No, we're still on the amendment.
Main motion has amended.
The point of order, I thought we were just voting on the amendment?
Right.
Okay, and are there any other than, I guess, an amendment to the amendment? Are there any further, further discussion by council, further amendments?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cook.
I wish to amend the amendment by, what was it?
Madam Mayor, point of order, right. We've amended. It's now as amended, so, and we, in the past, we've not been in the habit of amending amendments, so it's now the document as amended twice, but so.
Well, how do you?
It's just, just move to amend once more.
All right. Knowing that that's where it's going to go.
Okay. Correct.
All right. I learn something new every day. Madam Mayor, I wish to amend by adding language that the shall not, shall not exceed cost would be $15,000.
Second.
Motion has been made to add a cost not to exceed $15,000, seconded by Mr. Case. Discussion by the public. Discussion by the public. Discussion by council?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson.
Where 15,000 equals, so there's the 5650, and then the 8300, so that's around 13, correct? So where, how do we get to 15?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Case.
I could be wrong, and I don't want to put words in my colleague Mr. Cook's mouth. We don't know what the amounts are going to be, and that would give an extra leeway should they exceed that 13, 950.
That, Mayor, through you in response to both my colleagues from Word 3, that was exactly what my thinking was going to be. As Ms. Ramirez stated, you know, it's anybody's guess as to what the costs of moving are going to be. I would imagine those costs are going to be significant. That was my thinking behind the amount in the suggested amendment.
Any further discussion by council? Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the amendment to add in a cost of not, shall exceed $15,000, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No. Motion passes? We are back, oh, let me wait, we can amend amendments. Is there any further discussion by council?
Madam Mayor.
Dr. Rennie. President Rennie.
This is more housekeeping, but under 16H, page 8, although Western Standard Time was the name of a title of an album by Asleep at the Wheel, I don't think Western Standard Time exists. It should be Mountain Standard Time.
Nice catch, President Rennie. I like to know that you read things. That's very good. We just stuck that in there to see who was watching. Thank you.
I bet you have one of their albums, though.
I have a few of their albums.
All right. That doesn't, we'll just declare that, we'll just declare that a housekeeping item, and we will not need a vote on that. All right, is there any further discussion on this matter? We are back on the main motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson.
Anytime that we do three amendments up here with that kind of a, basically back and forth, it makes me even more nervous that it doesn't go through the courts and it comes before us. That was what my apprehension was in the beginning, was that this could have been ironed out. If this would have come to me with a decision by the courts that was in the vouchers, I would have gladly approved this, no problem. I have a direct issue with approaching council in this manner to basically bring forth what I know out there to be at least 15 to 20 other individuals that have been disenfranchised by the city for other public works issues. And so if we calculate up to this of $200,000, it's only going to take four more of these before we actually hit 1 million. And so I'm a no strictly on the precedent that I just believe that this should have been handled through the courts.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is there any further discussion by the council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Luna.
In order for this to not even have taken place, we should have done the right thing and bought Mrs. Ramirez's house to start with, so I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion by the council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Shaner. I switch. I keep wanting to call you doctor and president. Mr. Shaner.
You know, as an attorney, I certainly believe there's a lot of merit to the judicial process, but as a councilman and policymaker, sometimes there's a lot of merit to not using the judicial process, and there are, there are things that are the right thing to do that may not be required legally, and I think in this situation, we've clearly diminished the value and use of this property, and we've also really inhibited the property owner's ability to sell this property. And so I'll be voting in favor because I think it's the right thing to do.
Thank you, Mr. Shaner. Further discussion by council? Further discussion by council? All right, hearing none. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes with Mr. Johnson as a no.
Next item is number 14A on page 4, renewal applications for existing city liquor licenses and permits, retail restaurant, limited retail, resort, bar and grill licenses, and microbrewery and satellite distillery permits filed at the city clerk's office.
Public discussion on this matter? Public discussion? All right, hearing none. Mr. Luna.
Oh, you caught me off guard.
I did. We're moving so quick.
I was making him talk. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
This is the.
I just found my cheat sheet, too.
Where are we at?
We are on 14A.
14A.
We are on liquor licenses and permits.
Yeah, I should have known it's alcohol. Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve, and I so move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Weibel. Discussion by council?
Madam Mayor, I move to divide the question to provide for a separate vote on the renewal liquor license application filed by KEG Inc., doing business as DT's Liquor Mart and Tusker Bar, 3310 Ridge Road. Second.
All right. Motion has been made by Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Case. Discussion by the public? Oops, sorry, it's not debatable. Thank you so much. All right. As a motion divide, I should read this. As a, we're so new at this. As a motion divide, the question is not debatable. All those in favor of dividing the question, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we are now, and the main motion is divided to act on the renewal liquor license application filed by DT's Liquor Mart and Tusker Bar. Discussion by the council.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Case.
I guess through you, I probably have some questions for the chief, as well as the compliance officers, and then some follow-up for Mr. Georges. I see he's here tonight.
All right, Chief Kozak.
Madam Mayor, through you, Chief, my understanding is there were several compliance checks on, I guess, how many failed at this location versus the percentage of how many failed citywide?
Brian Kozak, Police Department. I'd like to actually have our officer, Haddam, who's our Alcohol Compliance Officer. He has specific dates and information for you on that.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Officer Haddam with the Cheyenne Police Department. So the city of Cheyenne, we conduct alcohol compliance inspections on every location, a minimum of twice a year. And it was at, as far as DT's goes, there was, excuse me, there was three failures for the compliance inspections at 3310 Ridge Road, and there was one failure at 2121 East Lincoln Way. So as far as, you know, DT's as a whole, there was, there was four failures. Three of them were at the location at 3310 Ridge Road. As far as the places citywide, there wasn't any other places that failed more than one inspection this last year.
Okay.
So, and it's how we do this, just so you're aware, in the past, we've always done just two a year, primarily two a year, unless there's been an issue that we've noticed or someone has told us that a location is selling to underage people, and then we'll do kind of a surprise inspection type thing. This last year, it came to our attention that there was a phone tree, so we do one inspection in the places where we're calling each other. And so by the time we do our second inspection, like.
Everybody knows.
Yeah, everyone knows, we might as well not even be there. And so what we did is, we also conduct undercover party patrol throughout the year using Cheyenne police officers, looking for underage parties. Part of that over time as well, those operations, we've had those officers do a minimum of two kind of surprise inspections when we do that. So it's increased our inspections, you know, sevenfold. And so we're doing a lot more inspections than we ever have been. The location, the DT's, these locations, since they did fail, we did one more inspection on those locations, just to see if they were going to be, you know, in compliance after that. Other than that, we allow our officers to just basically randomly pick two locations. So that's how we determine who gets checked.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Is there any other questions?
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Case.
I do have a couple of questions for Mr. Georges, if you'd come up.
Good evening. Please state your name.
Yes, Kevin Georges, 7511 Legacy Parkway, representing KEG Inc., doing business as DT's Liquor.
Thank you, yeah. And thanks for coming tonight.
Absolutely.
Mr. Georges. This isn't a greel, and don't be afraid here, but last year, we had this situation with another location that had similar violation patterns, and that location really took some measurable steps to remedy that these infractions would not happen in the future. I guess I'd just get some feedback as to what you're doing in terms of that.
Absolutely, and I'd like to do a little point of clarification, if you would. The report that got to you that shows three violations, I would argue that that's accurate. The first violation, which was a compliance check, was passed. Our employee passed it, and an underage employee came in, I'm sorry, an underage, an underage person came in with the officers behind them and performed their compliance check, and our staff member absolutely passed that. Did not sell, asked for an ID, and passed. So the first part of a compliance check that was done, she passed, she did her job as we require and as the law requires. The failure, if you want to link them together, I will accept that, was the fact that the employee was not TIPS certified in the 90-day criteria. Now, it is ordinance, we understand that. The employee was paid, as we do every employee, to go to, whether they're scheduled at that time or not, we pay them to go get TIPS certified. The employee was paid, as we do every employee, to go to... Whether they're scheduled at that time or not, we pay them to go get TIPS certified. She was paid to go to... Unbeknownst to us, she did not attend her TIPS training. We had no idea until the following day or two days later, when Officer Haddam came and cited the establishment, which actually went under my name. So actually, I was cited for, and as an owner, I take full responsibility, that is something that we have changed and amended how we do things. So in terms of a compliance check of selling to an underage, that is not accurate. The two following that absolutely are accurate. All I can tell you is those employees got a $360 ticket, and those employees lost their jobs. We have a very strict policy. We don't contribute to the delinquency. We preach it in our interviews. We preach it constantly in our meetings. We tell them, you're going to get a ticket, you're going to lose your job. We have it posted next to our time cards, so they see it every single day. I wish I could tell you there was something else that would work. Since those went down, I had a meeting with the Chief of Police and Officer Haddam. I feel that the arbitrary way that things are done, and it is arbitrary, that they hit every account twice and then randomly choose accounts, I still don't think... I still think that's geared and centered for a reason. But I called a meeting, and they were willing to, and we talked, and I even asked their advice, tell me something that can be done. Tell me something that we could do, that we can do as a city, that we can do as an industry. I'm all ears. They did recommend one thing that another account here did in town that was having some troubles, and that was implement ID scanners. An expensive alternative, not a bad one. However, you still have to get your employees to ask for an ID. That's what our problem was. One didn't even ask. The other one asked and didn't even look at it. We preach it, we talk about it, we discuss it. One of those employees, we just got her W-2 back, we don't know where she exists, and she was on... Like, we gave her an opportunity, and it still wasn't enough for her to do what we asked, and what the law asks. That is the law. We don't argue that. But we do preach it, and we do use them as an example by name to other employees. That's what we have done, and we continue to do that. And I do think, ladies and gentlemen, we have a minimum of 300 to 1,000 transactions a day at two locations. I've asked the chief, I've asked Officer Haddam, please come sit with me. We'll sit up in my office, and we will watch how many IDs we take every day. We are checking IDs, we're making sure. We don't want to contribute to the delinquency, absolutely not. It doesn't do us any good. But I've invited, I've invited anybody in this room to come sit with us and see. We really are doing our due diligence. I was a fan of the change of the state liquor laws. I was a fan of the change, which we worked with the Chief of Police on for the local ordinances. I personally think we should get a little stronger on deterrents for our youth. I don't want to ruin lives, but if we make some things hard or painful enough, if you will, as a true deterrent, that they won't come and try and buy or be drinking at these parties, I'm all for that. But I do need you to know that as an organization, and in all fairness, I've got another point of clarification. We do have a call tree, ladies and gentlemen, and if anybody thinks that's just so we can beat the police, shame on the police, and shame on anybody in this room that thinks that. We share information valuable to our industry. There's a bad issue happening, not only in our state, not in our city, but across the country. Fake IDs are as easy to attain as going on a website and giving them $100. That very same scanner that I spoke of, they scan, ladies and gentlemen. They scan on these actual devices, okay? We call each other on our calling tree. We communicate with each other. Matter of fact, tomorrow, if anybody would like to come, we've got our Laramie County Liquor Association meeting that we have every other month to talk about what's going on in our community. What can we do? How can we better it? We got word a while back that they were going to start hitting up parking lots at the high school games. For it, definitely do it. I mean, we're encouraging, we're talking, what can we do to work with the Cheyenne PD? It's not an enemy, it's not an us versus them. We will do what we can to make this thing better. And that's just not mine. Yeah, I'll stand up here in front with our compliance failures, and I take that responsibility. But I do speak for the very good owners, a few of which are behind me as we speak, that are here just to be here, out of support of their own licenses. We don't, even if many think we do, we won't sell to somebody just for that $9 we might make off of a pint. Actually, I take that back. We don't make $9 off of a pint. That's what it costs. We make 80 cents off of that pint, sorry. My bad. Got some chuckles back there. We really are a good industry, and you guys are very fortunate that we have some good owners. And I'm sorry for that long-winded rebuttal there, Mr. Case, but on a personal level, yes, we fire everybody. Have a no-nonsense policy, you lose your job. But on the flip side, we also reward, just to do your job. I give $50 cash for anybody who passes a compliance check. I tell them, every person that walks through that line could possibly be $50 cash in your pocket. It's that simple. It's that simple. So we do, we try, we're going to continue to try, we're going to continue to push, and with any recommendations, we're willing to take them. But I think we've really tried our hardest to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Georges. Is there any other public discussion?
Thank you.
Questions? Okay, this moment... I'm actually going to turn the meeting over to President Rennie at this time.
I guess it...
You don't have to move. You can stay there.
Is that back to the chair?
Discussion from the council?
Yes, Cam. Or, sorry, yes, sir.
Go first.
No, I'll go last.
All right. Kevin...
Mr. Johnson.
Kevin, I needed you. Yeah, I do, too. Sorry about that. You asked for a recommendation. Have your employees take out the trash more. Every time I go to Tusker's, the kids are always in the back row.
Say that again. Take out the trash?
Yeah, take out the trash where your dumpsters are, because the kids are always... I always notice every time I go to Tusker's, the kids are always parked in the very back lot, behind your parking.
Waiting for the...
Yeah, waiting for somebody either to go in, or... Because you can tell, because they're all giggling and laughing, and they're all hanging out in the back thing. So if you want a recommendation, you can obviously tell where they park, because they're trying to get further away, hoping they won't be noticed. So if you just have somebody take out the trash more repetitively, you'll probably see several of them trying to get the courage to go in.
And Officer Johnson, I appreciate that. Matter of fact, to bring City Council... Or, I'm sorry, the police in, I've also asked that, what we could do with more walkthroughs, with more drive-throughs. That'd be great. I mean, I love that. Are you talking on the bar side or on the package side?
On the package side.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Cook?
Yes, Dr. Reed, through you to Mr. Georges. Kevin, I wanted to give you a chance to elaborate. You mentioned on the topic of the TIPS training, you mentioned that you had made some internal changes on your process for that. I was just curious...
On the TIPS training?
Yeah, I thought, yeah, you had mentioned that you'd made some procedural changes internally, maybe on how you're handling that, or... Maybe I misinterpreted what you said.
Yeah. On the TIPS...
If you changed your process for doing that.
Yeah, on the TIPS, to clarify, and if I did say that, I do apologize. I was really trying to avoid the conversation of the TIPS. In all actuality, just to comment on the TIPS, I don't mind the TIPS training whatsoever. In fact, I encourage anybody in law enforcement and City Council ever just to take it, just so you have an idea of what the TIPS training is. It's four hours, sometimes a little longer. It's not the best way to spend four hours, but it is educational. But I will tell you that it is 99.9% geared towards on-premise, meaning restaurant and bar. By what statute is anybody who handles alcohol, deals with it, is required to go to it? We at both entities have both package and bar. So it's an easy thing to send everybody to. To be honest, and to tell you, with the gal that passed and then also actually did not have her TIPS training, believe it or not, she had actually passed that one and the two previous compliance checks, all three, without any TIPS training. So I'm not saying that the TIPS training is not successful and worthwhile. It totally is. What I'm saying was that was from us preaching what we need to accomplish, okay? But more so what the TIPS does do, it does a great job of the on-premise. Any of the owners here who have bars and/or have owned bars in the past, it's a great resource to see what maybe intoxicated people look like, as opposed to ones that are just being obnoxious, things like that. It does help the process, okay? But what we have done, aside from the TIPS, is that we really educate people on what they're looking for, the patterns. Mr. Johnson, who says there's people waiting to maybe get the courage, or maybe ask somebody, or they're maybe waiting to meet somebody, maybe they're a nineteen-year-old and they've got a twenty-year-old friend that meets them there and gives them money, things like that. We do talk about patterns of things. We've had people that have come in, honestly, three times within ten minutes. They're out making a buck, you know? Give me $5, I'll buy you this. I mean, it does happen. Not a lot, but it can happen. So there are these education things that we watch, that we try to educate people on and what they're looking for, everything from the intoxicated person that may come in multiple times to what we're looking for in ages, those type of situations. So there is discussion that happens.
Mayor, through you to Mr. Georges, again, I guess, really, Kevin, what my question was, as you mentioned, you know, that they're paid to go to TIPS training.
Right.
I guess that's really what my question was...
Gotcha.
As to...
Gotcha.
Have you changed your procedure to ensure that that piece of being paid to go and then not going?
No. No, 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 thank you, okay.
If you were changing that process.
I appreciate that. Now I understand what you're saying. No, absolutely not. What we do is, so for example, somebody who, it's held the first Wednesday of every month, okay? So what we do is if somebody is scheduled on that Wednesday and they have to miss a shift, we're not going to penalize them for something that is an ordinance, okay, that's not their doing, but because it is an ordinance and they have to have it required, we're not going to penalize them for missing a shift. We're going to pay them to be there, okay? But we also feel, out of fairness, we pay everybody to go. So if you're scheduled, not scheduled on a Wednesday, but you're scheduled on the weekend, we still pay you to be there for four hours, four and a half. Mike Moser, we joke, he does it, and I say, you know, if you can get it down to four hours and not four and a half, you're saving me a little bit of money. Joking, but it's one of those situations that, no, we still pay everybody, and I'm still going to. What our policy now, though, is, and anybody who in the room can attest to this, if they go and they... What we tell them is to have... Now, what we do is we tell them to have their TIPS card sent directly to us, okay? When they do, they have to put down their address and then the address that they want it sent to. Well, in the past, we let them send it to their own home, okay? Then they're supposed to come in, give us the card, we make a copy, and we are supposed to have a file showing every employee, current employee, and their TIPS card. We do that. You can come into our place right now and see who's TIPS certified, who's up, who's up for renewal, because they're only good for three years. Yeah, I guess we learned a little bit, is that now they ship straight to us. We do it, we take a copy, give it to them, and then we know that they were TIPS certified. Now, we do follow up on it, too. Were you there last night? Yes, I was. We make sure that we're covered. It took one. We've been in this ten years, and in ten years, we've never had an issue, but we had one. And it cost the establishment a compliance. It cost me, I apologize, I don't know how much it was, but it cost our establishment a fine. But, you know, that's all we can do, really. People are going to make mistakes, and as long as you learn from them and don't repeat that, then you've accomplished them.
Thank you, that's all I had.
Sorry, I was misunderstanding that you were on this.
It may not have been clear with my question.
No, we're good.
Thank you. That's all I had, Mayor. Mayor Ohr.
Thank you, Mr. Georges. How many employees do you have?
Right now, between the two, we're close to forty, forty-three.
Forty, forty-three.
Yeah.
And the employee who failed the last compliance check had been checked before. You said that she had passed previously?
She had been, three before that. And then the last one that she failed, she lost her job.
Mr. Georges, did you not know at the time when she had passed the other compliance checks, did you not bother to see whether or not she had completed the TIPS training at that time?
You have ninety days to do that, and quite honestly, we were not asked about TIPS training.
Mr. Georges, if you could clarify for me, you stated that your employees are scheduled to go and you follow up when they go. So why did you not follow up with this particular employee?
Great question. The employee that was supposed to did not follow up on that job. Well...
Mr. Georges, as the employer, I ask why you did not follow up with the employee?
Good question. We did not follow up with the employee.
Why not?
Mistake.
No further questions.
Any further discussion? Okay, the motion... Mayor.
Mr. Vice President. I take extreme exception to your comment of shame on the police, because they are simply doing their job. And while any member up here should probably attend the TIPS training, I would also urge any bar owner to go out on a ride-along with our police when they're picking up bodies and talking to parents whose children have overimbued. And I think our police do a really fine job, so I would not say shame on them. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. The vote is for the renewal of the liquor license for KEG. Get to the correct page. I think it's KEG Inc. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. At this point, as we go further into this, I have a family member that is a corporate officer for one of the corporations listed here, so I need to recuse myself.
All right, so we are now back on the main motion to approve the remaining liquor licenses and permit renewal applications. Any further City Council discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Leiborn.
I have a question for the chief. We just heard some interesting testimony, chief, that anyone can manipulate the internet and get a ID that passes those electronic checks. Would you agree that that's the case?
Brian Kozak, with Police Department, through you, Mayor. Yes, that is true.
So in the case of the establishment that had trouble last year and purchased those devices, we're not sure how effective they are. Is that correct?
Well, true. You can purchase IDs that are fairly expensive that can pass those scanners. So the reader that's on the back of those scanners actually are read by those scanners with the fake information that's placed on those cards. That is true.
Well, that makes it pretty difficult for the person that's selling the alcohol, doesn't it?
Through you, Mayor, yes, that is correct. Now, again, from the police perspective, when we encounter a situation like that, we allow the vendor or the licensee in good faith that they've done what they can by checking an ID card that looks valid. an ID card that looks valid. So we would not hold the licensee accountable in that situation. It's actually the responsibility of the person who's using a fake ID to purchase alcohol at that point.
And, excuse me, how pervasive is that problem? Do you, are there a substantial number of young people that are doing it?
It's hard to say. I know that the bars that do use those scanners, there's only a couple in town that I know of, and talking to the licensees or the owners of those establishments, they average maybe, I would say, one a month or every two months where they encounter that ID, they seize it. There's certain characteristics on those IDs that the licensees learn after a while, certain things that are similar in all the IDs that they can pick up on and recognize, so they'll seize the ID and then provide it to us at a later time.
Thank you.
Any other further council discussion? Further council discussion?
Yeah, I have a question.
Mr. Johnson.
For Chief Kozak. Sorry, he went out of the room.
Chief, come on back.
You're the next contestant.
I guess going to my real job thought process, have you seen less fake IDs with, through the Real ID Act, like with the Wyoming IDs, with the holograms and those types of things compared to the states that haven't come into compliance with the Real ID Act? Or is that something that you say, like New Mexico or Minnesota or Wisconsin, that you know that they haven't complied with the Real ID Act, and so those are red flags that you guys might look for compared to the other states that aren't in compliance?
Yes, Brian Kozak with the Police Department. I might ask Officer Haddam, he's more knowledgeable on this, but I do know other states are producing more fake IDs than Wyoming for that reason. Do you have a more specific answer than that?
Hi, Officer Haddam again with the Cheyenne Police Department. In the past, it seems like in talking to the liquor establishment owners, that officers were not dealing with some of the fake IDs in the past. And it's within the last, I would say, year, year and a half, that the owners of the liquor establishments have said, and even have showed me, a stack of fake IDs that they've collected and said, what can we do about these? So since then, this past year, we've actually raised the bond through the courts, so raised the bond for the individual who tries to pass a fake ID. And I've tried to encourage the owners to tell their management to give us a call, because we would like to start dealing with this a lot more, so that we can curb it. As far as how many we've collected, I think as a police department, we haven't seen a whole lot yet. The liquor establishment owners, and I know some of them are here, they probably have a really good understanding of how many they're seeing. It's my understanding, we're just not seeing them reported very often yet, so I don't know if that clarifies.
I guess just through a follow-up, I was just wondering if you saw less even on the readers for the states that were compliant with the Real ID Act compared to, you know, the scanners reading the ones that aren't in compliance?
I understand Wyoming isn't, is involved in that act, correct? Because we have seen a lot of fake Wyoming IDs, a lot of them are Laramie, maybe because the college, but a lot of the Wyoming ones are reading just fine. They're just a little off-color, and we've seen off-color as far as the actual color. And then we also have seen a lot of Florida for some reason, but there are a lot of Wyoming ones that do scan just fine. You really have to have a pretty good eye, and I understand, in kind of a dark, you know, room, it's pretty hard to spot one, so.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Further discussion by the council? Further discussion? All right, hearing none. A vote on all the remaining liquor renewal license applications. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Dr. Rennie, come on back.
Next item is number 15C on page five, announcement of a public hearing to be held March 26, 2018 at 6:00 PM in City Council Chambers, 2101 O'Neill Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, for retail liquor license transfer of location application filed with the City Clerk's Office for Steamboats Limited Liability Company, doing business as Steamboats Wyoming Steak and Smokehouse, from 1947 Del Range Boulevard to 115 East 17th Street, Cheyenne, Wyoming. Other business?
Thank you, sir. Other business before us from the public? Other business from the public? Other business from the public? Good, hearing none. Other business from the council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Case.
At the February 26 City Council meeting, the motion to accept the proposal for a new municipal court site from Chuck West, Number One Properties Incorporated of Cheyenne, in an amount not to exceed $275,000, failed. Having voted on the prevailing side and pursuant to Chapter 2.04 of City Code, I move to reconsider the vote on the main motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Case, seconded by Mr. Shaner. So for clarification of the agenda item proposed to be considered, clerk, would you please read the clarification, or would you please read the agenda entitlement?
Madam Mayor, the February 26, 2018 agenda item being reconsidered was titled, Consideration of RFP-14-18 for the new site of the City of Cheyenne Municipal Court, 1% Specific Purpose Sales and Use Tax.
All right, discussion by City Council on the motion to reconsider.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Shaner. Discussion on the motion to reconsider first.
Madam Mayor, I move to amend the motion to add the following.
We need to, we have to reconsideration first?
Oh, excuse me.
Yep, that's okay. So we're just discussing whether or not to reconsider? All right, hearing no, discussion reconsider. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion passes with President Rennie and Mr. Cook and Mr. Laborn as no votes. All right. Mr. Shaner.
All right, Madam Mayor, I wish to amend the motion to read that we accept the proposal from Chuck West, Number One Properties, Inc. of Cheyenne, in an amount not to exceed $275,000 for the purchase of the property located at the corner of 17th Street and Carey Avenue, known as the Carey Building. The closing on the property shall not occur until and unless an analysis of the site, along with estimates to demolish the building, remediate the site, and construct a one-story building is completed, and such analysis concludes this can be completed within the $9 million allowed by the ballot proposition. If not, then that site will be rejected and a new RFP shall be issued, seeking new proposals.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Luna. Discussion by council.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Shaner.
Just to explain, I was a no-vote last meeting, and so in reconsideration of this, over the course of the last two weeks, we've had some great discussions, and in particular, Madam Mayor and City Attorney Hackel, thank you for taking the time you did to really help us sort through this, and Noel Griffith did as well and his team. I had some concerns about ADA compliance, about whether we would need this $9 million in ballot funding to upgrade this facility based on ADA compliance, and those have pretty much been addressed, in my opinion. So I'm comfortable moving forward on the ADA front. And then as to the other concerns that I had, were particularly with just some unknowns related to the demolition, remediation, and construction of the Carey site. I think it's a good site, but I did worry about unforeseen costs and seeing a spike over that $9 million, and then having to come in out of reserves or another funding stream to compensate. So with this amendment, what it says is, if we get a professional constructibility analysis done, and it comes in at $9 million or less to build that first-floor structure, then I'm comfortable moving forward with the Carey site. If it goes over that amount, then we will go out to an RFP and find another site that we can do for $9 million or less.
Mr. White, did you have a question?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Case.
In reference to the amendment here, and perhaps Mr. West can speak to this, we received a letter today from Sean Lim indicating that the property owner was on board as long as we were under contract by March 26 and closed before April 30. Given the amendment here, perhaps you can shed light as to whether the property owner is, you know, willing to work with that timeframe so that we know what we're getting, and perhaps a follow-up question for engineering, which would, you know, be, can we get that analysis done by April 30 in order that we can move forward?
Madam Mayor, through you, in response to Mr. Case, Mr. Lim gave me a letter, and I gave you all a copy this morning, and basically, the letter said two main or important things. One, the previous contract with the Affinity Group, which we discussed last council meeting, has in fact been rescinded and a mutual release was signed. The other thing is, he reaffirmed his RFP response to sell to the city for $275,000, and he did put a date in there. And the reason he put a date in there, he didn't want the thing floating forever, sort of like if you owned a piece of real estate and you made an offer to sell it, you wouldn't want to just have it open forever. So I'm not saying he's inflexible, but he wants some sort of either a yes or no vote within a reasonable amount of time. And I think he would work with the city in conjunction with getting those cost items that were discussed.
Okay, thank you. And then perhaps Ms. Allen, you could speak to that. I don't, I know we would need to onboard somebody to get that analysis done, but that seems to be a pretty tight timeframe. What are your thoughts?
Madam Mayor, through you, Councilman Case, unfortunately, Vicky Nemetschek, Public Works Director, talked to the people that would have done the analysis. I would say it's a little tight, based on my previous experience, but maybe another 15 days. I'm just not familiar with the market yet in Cheyenne, so I feel like it is a little tight.
Mr., and I, I'm sorry, Mr., I have a question. Oh, sorry. Mr. Case, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I'm finished, thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else have a question?
Madam Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Cook, a question.
Through you, too. Well, it was going to be for Ms. Nemetschek, so I guess I would let you decide who is here who could best answer this question.
Mr. Lavoy is here tonight.
Then to Mr. Lavoy, if he's willing. Mr. Lavoy, this has to do, this question has to do with the responses to the RFP. I don't know, I'm assuming you're rather familiar with it. I'm hoping you are.
Through you, Mayor. No, I am not. I haven't had any sitting down, I haven't read the proposals.
So, again, whoever, Mayor, whoever you feel who can best answer it, if not, Mr. Lavoy. My question is, Mayor, knowing the minimum requirements of the RFP, which of the five properties, if any, who submitted, you know, of the proposals that were submitted, which of those completely met all the minimum requirements of the RFP?
Mr. Cook, I'm going to have Mr. Steve Gear address those questions. Thank you.
Steve Gear, Facilities Maintenance. The only one that met the requirements the closest was the Aziz Furniture Building. We have the parking lot directly across the street. The lot is large enough to handle the court facility.
Mayor, through you, Steve, you stated the closest, met the criteria the closest. Is, okay, so we didn't have any applicants that met it 100%?
Again, the Aziz Furniture Building was met as many of the requirements as I was asked to look at.
Okay. Thank you. That's the only question I had for him. Thank you very much.
Stand by.
Mayor, through you, and I don't know, again, I'll let you decide who can best answer this question, but is it, and I do realize at times, certainly, you know, there are those situations where applicants do not meet RFPs. I do realize in the real world that that does happen, that all criteria are not met. I do know that myself and Mr. White, I believe is very familiar with this process as well, you know, having been affiliated with the government as long as we have been, I myself, in the last 17 years, working in Health and Human Services, I've been involved in probably at least 30 RFP processes. Some of those, again, you know, writing proposals for RFPs, reviewing some, awarding some, so both sides of the process. And I'm just wondering, I don't necessarily know if this is a rhetorical question, but is this common, is it common practice, and do we want it common practice moving forward, for the City of Cheyenne to just take the best proposal available or to not hold proposals to the standards specifically outlined in the RFP?
Okay.
And that's my only question.
Mr. Case, to answer your question, the RFP was answered, and we can't do the homework or make everything work for, what we get is what we get, and this is what we got. Are there other questions from the committee on this particular amendment?
I just have a comment going back to, since the councilman from Ward III brought up the letter from the landowner, I just want to comment that I find it remarkable that a landowner whose property has been vacant and dormant for years is now telling us we have to make a decision in two weeks' time. If we don't make that decision in two weeks, I can't believe something's going to happen there immediately after that, and if something does happen there, that's all the more to the good of the city to have something there. So I have a hard time giving a lot of credence to what seems to be a bit of a veiled threat.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions? If, Mr. Johnson?
Mine's real quick. Mine's just for Councilman Shaner on the same topic. You did not put a date parameter on your amendment, correct?
Madam Mayor, through you, no specific date in the amendment.
Mr. Shaner, could you restate that, please?
Yes. I move to amend that we accept the proposal from Chuck West, Number One Properties, Inc. of Cheyenne, in an amount not to exceed $275,000 for the purchase of the property located at the corner of 17th Street and Carey Avenue, known as the Carey Building. The closing on the property shall not occur until and unless an analysis of the site, along with estimates to demolish the building, remediate the site, and construct a one-story building is completed, and such analysis concludes this can be completed within the $9 million allowed by the ballot proposition. If not, then that site will be rejected and a new RFP shall be issued, seeking new proposals.
The question, further question, is the closing date the deadline? Ms. Hackle, if you could weigh in as attorney for how this would read.
Certainly, Madam Mayor, through you, to Councilman Shaner and Councilman Johnson, and I guess the whole crew. The way that I hear Councilman Shaner's amendment, Councilman Johnson, is that the due date is the closing date. Is that responsive to your question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. However, I, with respect to the letter from the owner, which I was aware of but have not actually seen, that there be, that the building be under contract by the 26th of March and have a closing date, and I'm sorry, Mr. West, I didn't catch that closing date, but it was sometime in April. date, but it was sometime in April.
April 30th.
April 30th. It may or may not be possible to get a closing done in six weeks, but today is the 12th. And the way that the council normal, normals, the way the council's normal processes work, we would not even be able, even assuming that we, that my office could draft a contract, run it by the owner's attorneys, and attorneys could agree by the time of the next council agenda cutoff, which is the 21st, that's next Wednesday, the first time this council would see that would be the 26th. It would be referred to committee for discussion on April 2nd, and it wouldn't come back till the 9th. So I guess, I'm not saying this to say that this can't be done, I guess I'm saying we would have to work with the owner to come up with deadlines that fit within the governmental processes that are in place to allow you, to allow my office time to draft such a contract. This is a big undertaking and to allow it to, to come, because the contract itself would have to come back before you. And then the closing would proceed in accordance with the provisions of that contract. So I think, I think we may, may be close, you know, I frankly think we probably need a minimum, you know, and I'm just throwing this out there not to put a kibosh on anything, Mr. West. We probably need another month on each of those actions because some of things can occur concurrently, but that also speaks to Ms. Allen's concern about the tightness of the deadline for the conditions that Mr. Shaner has placed upon this proposal. Madam Mayor, did that answer your concerns?
Ms. Hackle, with the exception of a Mr. West has taken the microphone, there is the provision essentially with the city working in good faith, which I think is the spirit of the letter, not necessarily the date. So, Mr. West, while you're at the microphone.
Through you, Madam Mayor, to answer City Council's concern, I agree, having worked as Director of Real Estate for a huge county in the past, I appreciate everything you've said in terms of procedure. And again, Mr. Lim's goal here is not to put unreasonable time delays, but he's agreed to take his property off the market for the city's benefit. And despite Councilman Rainey's concern that this has been on the market for a while, it hasn't been on the market at a price of $275,000 for a while. As you might recall, in my past discussion, the assessor had this price at 1.2 million, and I've worked diligently to get that price down. And we've had two offers on this property, one that wasn't high enough for the owner's benefit, and two, the one by Affinity Group that was recently dismissed, or rescinded, rather. So I believe that if this went on too long, there would be some other offers that came in that may be attractive to Mr. Lim. But he's willing to work with the city. He wants to see the city have this building. And his original goal for buying the building has been long lost, it's been over 10 years. So, short answer to your question, City Council, is that he will work with the city on reasonable timetables as long as the city is actively pursuing this in good faith.
Thank you. Is there other discussion by council?
Madam Mayor, just briefly for Mr. West, and I understand that we're working on an amendment right now, so we might have to revisit this, but, and I'm not a nine, I'm not a, I'm not a Realtor, but educate me a little, in terms of due diligence, would it not be, given the scope of what we're trying to do, a 90-day due diligence standard in the industry on this type of thing?
It would be, Councilman Case. The issue, though, if we can put it in real estate terms, he's willing to sell it at this price, as is where is. We know there are a lot of problems with the building. We've discussed them over many council meetings. So if you go into a conditional due diligence where, oh gee, if we find asbestos, we're not going to do it, well, we already know there's asbestos. We already know there's-
Madam Mayor, I'm-
Please don't interrupt this.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just didn't want to go down, what I'm talking about is due diligence in terms of the amendment, okay? Our analysis of the property.
Yes, that would be sort of the extension of the contract, you know, whatever the City Council thinks is a reasonable timeframe, I mean, if you came up and said it's going to take a year, that's not going to work. But I think City Council has suggested that perhaps another month would be sufficient, and I think that's reasonable.
Thank you.
And I think Mr. Lim would as well.
Thank you. Other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. LaVoye.
I'm not sure who this question should be erected to since Vicky Nemeczek isn't here, but maybe someone here can answer it for me. Who is going to pay for the constructability review conceived of in this amendment?
Mr. LaVoye, to answer your question, we have not seen the amendment, nobody could have answered that for you tonight, period.
Well, Mr., Madam President, members of the council, I hope you excuse me, I'm a little hoarse here. I was out of commission last week, I had foot surgery, and so I couldn't participate in the evidently extensive discussions that occurred here, so I'm a little behind the But we should not proceed with this amendment without knowing who and how and when and by whom this constructability review occurs. Because I suggest to you, members of the council, that we would be irresponsible, to put it mildly, to take that expense upon the city. That is clearly an expense of the study of that site. It is absolutely the responsibility of the property owner. It's not our responsibility. And as you know, I've been very concerned about the contract issues with Noel Griffith. We don't have a professional service contract with him, and to this point, we've twice used emergency procedures and a purchase order. I think it's well-known in the community that the City of Cheyenne does not have a great record of real estate transactions. And we saw an example of that earlier tonight. It would be very imprudent to approve this without knowing who, when, where, why, and how this constructability analysis takes place. And if I can't get an answer to that question, I'll ask another. Who is going to pay the $270,000? Is it going to come from the Sixpenny account that was for this purpose?
Mr. LaVoye, the answer to that is yes. Mr. Shaner?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I would agree on answer number two, and asking for an answer to number one, just very similar to the other Sixpenny project that we've been working on, Christensen Road, the city paid for a constructability analysis to be done. And so it's definitely appropriate for any property we look at to build a courthouse that we have a professional constructability analysis done. So I think we will be paying for it. You don't, we've run into this situation before when you get a cost estimate done by the seller, that's not, not a good way to do business on our part. We need our contractor to do a professional analysis of what this is going to cost. So the city will be paying for it. And, you know, I would defer to the executive branch on whether they choose to use emergency procurement, whether they want to run some sort of proposal, request for proposals through the council. I think there are any number of ways we could go about acquiring a consultant to do a constructability analysis. To me, I have faith that the executive branch can execute that, and if they want more feedback from the council, I'm sure they'll ask for it.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. LaVoye.
Well, since Christensen Road or Overpass came up, I would point out that that constructability review is about the design. It's not about a purchase of property. It's not about a purchase of property that we know has very significant problems. And I believe it's only appropriate to ask in regard to this amendment, how it would be executed, whether it's, no matter who or how, how much is it going to cost? What are the parameters? What is the report? And I would have to say, Madam Mayor, and members of the council, and members of the public, this building's been a problem for a long, long time. I've toured the building with some of the consultants that were referenced here in the proposal some time ago that did an architectural analysis. That was done with state funds on behalf of the city. We've been over backwards to try to work with Mr. Lim. This time, we ceased doing that. This time, we looked at our responsibilities to the taxpayers who specifically and absolutely did not approve an expenditure of those funds for this purpose. That is not in that ballot language, and I think you can twist yourself around all you want. This is for a court. And the point that I want to make, and we'll be discussing this further, as I'm sure you're aware, due to my resolution, it'll be coming up next week, we need to consider what the court does, what the court needs, how the court functions by working with the people that know the most about it. Instead, we've chosen an approach that is very unique, I guess you could say. If you've got a problem property that you haven't maintained and that has become blighted, hey, we'll analyze it for you. We'll expend the funds to determine the extent of the problem, and then we'll conceive of purchasing it for the good of the community. I don't think that washes. I think that this is something that needs to be answered tonight before we pass this amendment. Who's going to pay for it? And where is that money going to come from? So I hope we reconsider this idea. I think a reconsideration is in order, a full reconsideration of this entire process. And I would remind you, members of the council, that our involvement to this point was one lunch hour work session six weeks ago. One, one-hour work session six weeks ago. Is that the level of involvement that is indicated by this very important action? I don't think we've been involved to the extent we should have been. I'm sorry I was unavailable last week, but I hear all sorts of issues were discussed and evidently resolved to some members of the body's satisfaction. This is very much the wrong approach, and certainly will be a matter of intense discussion. And I look forward to participating in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaVoye. And to answer your question, and I might indulge Mr. Downey treasure as far as where we might have the funds to conduct, you know, this review, which I think is, you know, due diligence with anything. I mean, you and I, we make an off on a house, and then we do some extra work. And while we've done some work, I don't, if council needs some extra homework done, I think that's fine. But as far as extra costs, I believe we might have some additional funds left over from the sale of the Police Department building, which, as I recall, was set aside for, you know, one-time use for possibly a situation like this, as well as, we're fortunate that we have some reserves.
Madam Mayor, yes, we do have some money remaining from the sale of the police building, and there are a couple other small, smaller line items that may be able to cover the cost of a constructability review within the general fund, as well as we could dig into reserves if needed also.
All right. Thank you very much. Further discussion or questions by council?
Yeah, are we still on the amendment?
We are still on the amendment, and actually, we need to go out to the public for comment.
Madam Mayor, just clarification on-
Mr. Shaner.
First and foremost, I have the utmost respect for Councilman LaVoye's opinion on this project. I, too, had some, some deep reservations, certainly in hindsight, we could have done things differently, included council more, given a longer time period to respond to the RFP, a lot of different things we could have done. But, but we're here today, and there are certain set of circumstances that we face. And this sort of suggestion that the language in the Sixpenny ballot does not allow for this, I couldn't disagree more with that interpretation. The language specifically says, $9 million to the City of Cheyenne for the construction of a new municipal court to be located at 2101 O'Neill Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, as in addition or remodel to the City of Cheyenne's current government building, comma, or for the construction of a new municipal court at such other location as determined appropriate. And the reason we put that second part in there was, we spent months with the former Mayor Kason and Council President Rennie and I, being the two members on the Sixpenny Committee for the city, trying to find another spot near where we are right now, and we just turned up nothing. And we were under the gun, the county commissioner set the timeline for when we go out to the Sixpenny, and we had to make up our minds. And the best we could do was to include that language, that, hey, we didn't really know where we were going to put it, we were going to look at it, doing it here, or we were going to look at another site. And so that's the intent behind that language and the history as to why we gave ourselves the flexibility to either expand here or find another site that's appropriate. And through the processes that we've undergone, again, whether we agree with those or not, I don't believe the process was fatally flawed. I think it was flawed, but I still think that we can move forward on the results of that process with this amendment in mind, again, because I don't want us to get into a situation where we make a site selection and end up burying ourselves with unforeseen costs. So I think we need to do our due diligence, get the constructability analysis done, and let's, let's hope it meets the $9 million or less mark and do something good for downtown and get our court built.
Right, thank you. If there's no further discussion by council, we need to-
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Cook.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I'll keep this brief. I believe this question is, is rather germane, not only to the main motion, but also to the amendment. And Mayor, maybe you can, you can clarify, yourself and I, as well as Attorney Hackle, we're part of the discussion. But I, to be clear, are we talking, are we talking a, a single-story structure, or is there still the, the potential for wanting a two, a two-story building with the second story being, being a shell?
Mr. Cook, the way that I understand not only the amendment, but the discussions and President Shaner, or, excuse me, I'm still used to you being president, Mr. Shaner, the $9 million, what the voters approved was for the courthouse. And so the way I understand it is for that $9 million would be for the, the one story, the 10,000 square feet, no basement, because we don't want water, so no basement, a single story. And the estimates for a second story would then put us a bit over budget. It's an estimate of, and Mr. Gere, I don't have this, maybe if you could step forward. But before we get that, that, that actual number, come forward now, before we get that actual number, what the thought is, is that the taxpayer, $9 million, would pay for the single, that, that first floor. And then the city, and I can tell you that we've had offers of buying some land and some other things, and we have reserves, but the city would then- But the city would then pay for the additional cost, of which Mr. Gear will give the estimate for. The city would pay for the additional cost to go ahead and build that second story. So it's historically correct with the neighborhood. We would shell it out for future growth, either with the courts, but even growth possibly for our own city workers, should we need to vacate this building, should we need to do work with that. So, Mr. Gear, I'm sorry, I don't have that additional figure.
I don't have that exact number, but I...
Go ahead. I'll let you finish. I, for whatever reason, I had a total of 10.8.
That's what comes to my mind, too.
I believe it was about two million dollars.
You were there as well. And Mayor, that's the only reason I brought this up. It was just to try to get some clarification. Because if that was still the thought process to do the two stories, then, you know, I mean, obviously, there is no way that would fit within the amendment. So that's why I wanted to ask for the clarification.
Thank you. That is truly the intent of, I think, the amendment, the way that it states. Is that correct, Mr. Shaner?
Madam Mayor, the amendment just specifically refers to the one floor, one-story building.
Ms. Hackle, do you have a question?
No, Madam Mayor, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment, which is that the language of the ballot does not limit the, whatever courthouse is constructed, to a single story, though I understand, Mr. Shaner, the intent of your amendment, absolutely. But I would point to the example of the Public Safety Center, which, with the funds that were available, they shelled out, I believe it's the, there's a portion of the West Side. And so, and they shelled it out, it's there for future growth. If, and I am absolutely not an engineer, so, you know, I have no idea. But if it were Councilman Cook, that the nine million dollars allowed for even a preliminary showing out of the second story, there is no prohibition in the language of the ballot proposition to that aspect. Now, how far the nine million goes is beyond my approval.
Thank you, Madam.
And Madam Mayor, just to add to the city attorneys, my amendment would not prohibit us from addressing that if there were funds.
I didn't think it would.
All right. Thank you. Further discussion by council before putting this out to the public?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Laborne.
I can't recall a similar situation. Maybe there has been. But I hear the term due diligence. I look at our responsibilities. And I have no answer tonight as to when, how, where, by whom, this constructibility review is going to happen. Is that correct? Is there an answer to my question?
There's not, Mr. Laborne.
Well... I've been here a lot. Seen some actions happen, but this one tops them all. This is the most amazing action I've ever seen this council take. I don't know when or how we can possibly comply with the proposal that has been brought before us to take this property off the hands of Mr. Lim, assume its liabilities, tear it down and develop it without an understanding of where the money comes from to do that. That is unprecedented. And I would point out that, Mr. West here pointed out that, and I quote, "Mr. Lim wants the city to have this building." Well, there is just no question about that, is there? Mr. Lim wants us to have this building. What is the benefit to us? It's got some severe problems that are, as yet, specifically unidentified. Its benefit is ephemeral, in my opinion. I heard a lot of talk about the parking issues at this site two weeks ago, but I didn't hear anything about the parking issues at this site. Are we assuming that everyone's going to go into the garage and park? Or are they going to be using those street spots? These things are a big issue at one site, no issue at another site. So I think I've made my point, but I wonder how we're going to proceed. We have to pay for what we purchase. We do not have to pay for the preparation of that site to the benefit of Mr. Lim, who has, in my opinion, allowed that property to deteriorate. We're rewarding the very behavior we seek to cease. So I look forward to this continued discussion. And, Madam Mayor, what will be the means that I can ask this question at a later date? If I can't get an answer tonight, when can I get one?
Mr. Laborne, tomorrow.
I look forward to that. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other further discussion on the amendment by council? And if not, we'll go out to the public on the amendment, not the main motion. On the amendment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Joe Doherty at L 225 Hobbs Avenue. I would first say, relevant to the motion, is before you, I think that a motion, if you have the money, I think that a motion to determine feasibility and cost effectiveness of acquiring this property is very much in order. I would also remind you, while you're doing that, to take into consideration what lies underneath that paint the saw out of that building. And it is some of the finest brick and stone of any building in this town. It's nearly 150 years old. And I'm sure there are going to be some, in addition to the loss of the aesthetics that Governor Joe Kerry put into place some 150 years ago, there's going to be some costs associated with that. And I think by all means, you need to know what those costs are. I think you also need to ask yourself at the time that you do that, whether you really do, as an elected member to this governing board, want to be a part of the destruction of a piece of our culture that has stood in this community for 150 years. And if you do, and you go forward, you think that's in the best interest of what you were elected to do, I think at the very least, you probably should show the general public an artist's rendition or rendering of the, what the site, we know what the site looks like now. We know what the site looked like at another point in time. And I think that the public, before you go forward and enter into a nine-million-dollar contract to go forward and build the building, I think the public should have an idea of what that site might look like in the future. Because by all means, you want it to be aesthetically pleasing. You want it to enhance the downtown, the historic, original city, downtown Cheyenne area that you're going to build in. And with that, that concludes my comments to the motion that is before you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any other comments about the amendment? The amendment, just the amendment, not the main motion. Just to the amendment. All right. We are on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The amendment passes. We are back on the main motion?
Mayor, may I have the nose, please, for the record?
Okay, nose for the record. Mr. Laborne and Mr. Cook.
Thank you.
Motion passes. All right, we are now back on the main motion. No, we are finished with public testimony, and now we are taking a full vote on the resolution as amended. Okay, and, thank you. And procedurally, clerk, can you help me out with why this is?
Madam Mayor, the reason that, under a motion to reconsider, when that motion carries, you are immediately back to the question that was pending before the governing body, right before that motion was taken, right before, or that vote was taken. Right before you called for the vote, we had accepted public comment, public discussion. We had accepted discussion from city council, and then the vote was taken. So when that motion to reconsider carried, you're right back to the point where you were back on city council discussion. The reason we had public discussion tonight was due to the motion to amend, which was something new that goes back out to the public. But that's how the motion to reconsider works.
We're back on the main motion as amended.
We are back on the main motion as amended. All those in favor? Dr. Rennie, President Rennie.
I agree. I understand that part of the rationale for picking this site is because it'll help to remediate what has been a vacant building for at least a decade. And I have to admit, it's become an eyesore, and something does need to be done about it. However, I don't think, if we take a long-term view, I don't think that this is the correct solution. Because, you know, people have said that we'll get, you know, it'll get people coming downtown, it'll get foot traffic downtown, it'll help downtown as a result. I have a hard time accepting that, because it's been downtown in the county building for decades. And so the foot traffic is going to be no different than what it's been for the last, since the county building was built, somewhere in the early '90s. And so that's not a valid argument for what's going to help our downtown. In addition, having been a member of the... The other part of that is, when asked, how many people are going to be in that building? The answer is at full employment, there's only going to be 10. 10 employees is not going to make a difference in downtown. 10 employees that we're just keeping in downtown, it's not going to make a difference. So something needs to be done. But this, to me, this is a short-term fix for a problem, and I wish we would take a long-term view. And all my years serving on the DDA and what I read about downtowns and the rehabilitation of downtowns is that you need to increase density. That means you need more people, whether it's living down there, employed down there. And saving 10 people that are already there is not increasing density. So I view this as a Band-Aid. And if we're, if we're going to really do something for downtown, if we're going to do development, then let's consider doing something bold there. And to me, that means, there are some buildings in our downtown, three that I can name, this is one of them, that I really firmly believe nothing is going to happen unless the city gets involved to some extent, whether it be as a public-private partnership with a developer or whatever. But I guess, you know, in talking to Councilman Laborne, he said, let's look at, you know, exploring and pursuing a quarter cent for redevelopment of downtown on the sales tax. I think that's, that would be a valid use of that. You know, we can maybe use the reserves to purchase this property and then do something with the developer. But let's take a long-term view of it and do something that would really have a tremendous impact for downtown, and this is not it. This is not the home run that, you know, people have said it's going to be. My view is it's getting to first base on an error. So... So, I mean, in...
Point of worth, I thought that there was no discussion...
Do you understand baseball analogies?
There was no discussion after the, we're back at the motion where...
Madam Mayor, through you to Councilman Royball, when that motion to reconsider passed, where you were right before the mayor called for that vote and you voted, was on city council discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
So to finish, Madam Mayor, earlier in the evening, we were asked to right a wrong. If we pursue this, I think we're doing a wrong to downtown that we're never going to be able to right.
So any other further discussion by council?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson?
Due to the fact that there's no public comment, as a member of the governing body, am I allowed to actually ask the questions of what Major and Allen stood up for? Because I believe they wanted to, so as a member, I can ask them what they would prefer to address?
Mr. Johnson, yes.
Okay, so, I know Major and Allen, you both stood up, so if you wanted to come say anything on this?
Thank you for giving them privilege of the floor, essentially.
My name is Major Dorf. I've lived at 3007 Bent since 1955. I've got just about four comments to make on this. The first one is, since the city already owns a property north of the existing city building, we don't have to tear down the building. We don't have to haul off the residue. We don't have to worry about the asbestos. We've got a lot up there that, with only 10 people, you don't have to have an enormous building. You can just add a couple of rooms to what we've got up here and have a place for a judge and so forth, and that should be adequate. Instead of wasting the $245,000 to buy the property and then hiring a bunch of millions or something, I think I've heard a million or something, to haul it off, demolish it and haul it off. And like Joe mentioned, with trying to preserve the front of the building, it would be a shame to take a ball to that. Give someone a chance to come in, remove the front of it now, and go from there. Anyway, my thought is, you're putting a courthouse right downtown in the middle of a business district. To me, that is not proper. It really just, it doesn't fit in with the decor. Secondly, the money that be spent on the current building, if you want to build somewhere else, you could use that money to purchase a lot somewhere else and build it. Okay, now, I've been front-house manager of Civic Center, this is my 27th season. Majority of the people over there, now, I'm not speaking for the Civic Center, I'm speaking for Major Dorf and what I hear. People look me up at the Civic Center and say, you go to city council, will you pass a message on to them? I said, sir, I'd be glad to. They say, this parking lot over here, if it is demolished, we will no longer purchase our season tickets. Now, under the new regime, we're having some great programs coming in. We're really coming along fine. And I look forward to a tremendous future for the place. If that parking lot goes, it'd be a good place to put your empty dumpster. It's going to be just about that sum. Because if you have no value, you won't be able to attract anybody. When people come in, they use the streets. They block the street out here on 20th. Part of this up here on O'Neill with oversized vehicles, a park over there in the lot. Now tomorrow, we're going to have school buses in here. All day long, there'll be school kids, if we need the parking lot, to put the buses in. Please, don't destroy the parking lot. Please, don't destroy the parking lot. Keep it. Here's the other part of it. I've visited with someone that works in the city building, and I remarked to them my comments, and they said, "Oh, we don't want to have to walk clear across the street to park our car, we can park right out here, just walk right out the door." Well, look, we've got 60,000 people in Cheyenne to satisfy, instead of just a couple of clerks. I'm sorry, but let's be realistic. Let's work for the majority of the people. Let's keep the parking lot, let's put the city court on the north side up here, it's not going to consume all that space, not with just 10 people. It's just going to consume a small portion of it. You're still going to have parking there. And I can, two weeks ago, there were a number of people remarked about St. Mary's did not want to have a court next to the school. I can appreciate their comment. But if you go in the county building, you've got law enforcement people in there, it's If there was court up here at the building, it's going to have police protection. There's also mention about the ADA. Any new building, especially government building, must meet ADA standards. There should be no additional expenses for that, that would just be in the, in the plans to put, erecting the building. There would be certain standards to meet ADA approved. Years ago, I heard, and back to the building up here, and concerns of St. Mary's, Corlett School was up there for St. Mary's, that was years ago. So, St. Mary's, when they moved in, they moved into an area they should have suspected it was subject to becoming larger, to consuming more space. It seems to me like, if my memory is correct, years ago, there was a family moved in on the West 27th Street, and they were there for less than a year, and they complained about the train whistles at night, the train horns. So, they called a railroad unit, tried to convert, have conversation with them to stop their whistles at night, stop the horns. They said, "This is our business. We use them so other people on the other end know what's going on." Well, this building was put here in 1979, way before St. Mary's, and I have all the respect in the world for St. Mary's, trust me. We were here first. Let's exercise our grandfather rights and erect a building without purchasing any more property. It was ever better than money on the building. Isn't that simple? Or did you something? You got $9 million that the population of Cheyenne voted for. Put it all in a building, like you're on the north side. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dorr. I have a comment.
Yeah, I was going to say, sorry, I don't know this individual's thing.
Mr. Lane?
I didn't know that you were talking to. So, yeah, I'm Pat Lane, the principal of St. Mary's Catholic School, Madam Mayor and Council. You know, I think one of the biggest issues that we're talking about is, you know, long-term, you know, looking ahead. You know, that wasn't done with Mrs. Ramirez, and it was a traffic issue, and you tried to right a wrong, so there might be down the road, right a wrong by building this courthouse and the north parking lot, because when you look at it, you know, there's an intersection, you know, 22nd and O'Neil. So, you're going to have a lot of traffic coming through there, more traffic than right now. And if we look at, so, I've got 201 kids in my school, and there's 145 families, so at 8:00 in the morning, we've got 145 families coming, dropping off 210 kids, or 201 kids. So, then, after school, we kind of have the same scenario, about 120 kids or families coming to pick up their kids. We have other kids staying later because of aftercare. So, then about 4:30 and 5:30, you've got 20 or so families coming picking up their kids. You know, right now, we have, we have the potential, you know, I like to get my school about 260 kids, and I can see it starting to grow, because we're building the foundation, so it's going to cut tuition costs, not thinking our school's going to grow, so then we're looking at 190 families coming to pick up 260 kids. I'm not always going to be the principal there, I want to keep the size pretty small, but the capacity of that school is 320. So, then you're going to have 320 kids, you know, leaving, coming to school. We've got kids that go on walking field trips. They go to the police station, they go to the fire department, they walk to Mass, they go to the library, probably going to the Capitol Building, they'll be going, they go to the State Museum. So, you have three- and four-year-olds going on walking trips. You know, it's not always easy to manage three- and four-year-olds. So, my biggest concern is not necessarily an individual that's going to cause harm, it's the traffic, kids running around, our city's going to grow, there's going to be more people getting tickets, my school's going to grow, so I just think that needs to be considered down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. All right, was there anyone, Mr. Johnson?
No, I didn't know.
Oh, no, I just stood up, so...
Okay, all right.
So, just basically, a comment to Joe. Dr. Rennie will probably be here next year as well, and so as far as design aesthetics for buildings, you can rely on him, and you can thank your lucky stars, I'll be gone.
Okay.
I have better taste than both of you.
Are we, are we back to...
As Madam Mayor, point of order, I'd move, move the vote, move the question.
Calling for questions?
No, do that, you have to, that requires a second of voting, so...
All right, okay. Further discussion by council? Further discussion by council? Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Those noes are Mr. Cook, Mr. Labor, and President Rennie. Motion passes.
Dr. Rennie, President Dr. Rennie.
All right. Is there other business to come before the council? Any other business to come before the council? All right, hearing no further business, we are adjourned.